I'd like to call this Media Union Board of Education or please rise to the Fledge of Allegiance.
....................................
Statement of adequate notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting's旨, after 2/31, adequate notice to the speed has been provided as follows: On January 10th and May 31st, 2018, notice sent to the Holmes Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Clerk of the municipality. By state law or without spoken permission, it is billed at any time. In addition to the list I leave to this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as allowed at the very least scheduled monthly board meeting under Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gaviano.
She'll be late.
Mrs. Burge, here. Mrs. Williams, here. Mrs. Posak, here. Mr. Martuzzi.
Here.
Ms. Dirk Scherhada.
Please stop your traffic.
Mrs. Barani, here. Mrs. Wells, here. Mr. Tapuleski.
Here. Members of the public desire to make a comment on agenda items only? We will accept comments right now from anything that is on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move to the superintendentiary board.
Thank you, Mr. Tapuleski. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you have not already, there are copies of the agenda on the table. There's also a copy of the superintendentiary report, which is published each month on the day of our Board of Education meeting. It's an interactive newsletter that contains short articles, a rundown on recent news, with a link to a larger story, sometimes with more photos or video on our district website. I want to congratulate the class of 2018. Last Friday, we had a really beautiful... Mrs. Sarah. 407 students graduated. This was also... This was the 108th commencement of the London High School. A London High School, 108th class. It was also our 16th IB class. IB is our International Baccalaureate Program. There will be a few select schools in our state that have this prestigious and very rigorous program. Students who meet all of the criteria for an international baccalaureate diploma will find out about them in July, and that gets them recognized as individuals who are committed to self and education and gives them worldwide recognition. It's really a prestigious honor. Of the class of 2018, 83% of those students plan to continue their education at either a two- or four-year college or university. 4% plan on pursuing careers in the military. We recognize those students Friday. 9% plan to enter some other form of post-secondary training, and 4% will join the workforce. Our seniors have been accepted by more than 50 different colleges across the United States, including, but not limited to, Rutgers University, New York University, Drew University, Johnson &amp; Wales, Seton Hall, Drew, NJIT, the College of New Jersey, Mile of the Water, Virginia Military Institute, American University, Carnegie Mellon, and oh yeah, the US Navy Academy. So our students leaving well-prepared for their future and want to wish them all the best in the upcoming years. Tonight, we have a brief presentation by Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Cleary on some revisions that will be going to the elementary schedule beginning in September. This information was sent out in a letter via email to parents. There was a parent night also a couple weeks ago where some parents were able to attend. We wanted to give another opportunity for any parents who weren't able to attend to come tonight and ask questions. When Mrs. Cleary's them, we will give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. I see we have some teachers in the audience tonight, which is a good idea because I don't know the answer to the question. It may probably be... Mrs. Cleary?
Good evening, everyone. Just so... I'm just going to give you a brief overview of how we started this process. So we came to the point where we decided that it was time to revamp our elementary schedule just to start meeting the needs of the students. We solely need some more time in certain areas. We need more teacher collaboration time. And some just changes with how we broke things up in departmentalization. So back in October, we got together a team of people. That was a revision committee that consisted of teachers, instructional coaches, principals, supervisors, director, and central office, myself, and Dr. Robert Tozzi and Ms. Gayward. So we met in October and we began brainstorming and talked about what we would want to see in the scheduling and why we're redoing this schedule. First, we had to have a focus. So we all agreed upon that we wanted to improve the quality of student learning, number one. That's why we want to change it. We wanted to change the school cultures, and we wanted to increase time for teacher collaboration. Now, we knew that while doing this, and we know that there's only so many hours in a day. We couldn't extend the day any longer. So we had to do all of this and get everything we want into a schedule while managing the issues and constraints of time, whatever else it may be. So we also decided as a team that we were going to explore all options that there were for elementary schedules, both traditional and non-traditional. So after that first meeting with all of this in mind, we set out and started doing our homework and had everyone thinking about what they would like to see in the schedule. And our next meetings, we came to... The room is a room. It's our PDRC room. It's a wall of whiteboards. So I broke everybody into groups, and all the groups went to town. I said, "Sky's the limit." Just pretend that there's no budget, there's no anything, and what would you want to see in an elementary schedule? So everyone began brainstorming and writing down their ideas. We took all of that information down, took pictures of everything, and then it was sorted. And a lot of it was reoccurring. We saw a lot of the same thing that people were interested in. So we took that information and we came up with a top list. So the next meeting we had after that, presented it to the group and said, "Okay, these were your top, let's say, 15." And we went over them, and then we went over every... Of course, there's always some onesies and twosies, you know, outlier things that, you know, one person, because it's something that they think that's necessary in the schedule. But we went over every single one of them. And we came up with basically a top 10 list of everything that was really important, what we would like to see in the schedule. And I am happy to say that we were able to incorporate all of that into the schedule that we have moving forward for next year for elementary school. So some of the things that were on the top of the list, and some of the... You know, as parents, some of this might not affect you because this is in your child's day-to-day routine. For example, now physical education teachers are going to teach health before that was taught by the classroom teacher. And there was a time allotment for that. So now that's some buyback time for that classroom teacher because now the physical education will be taught by the PE teacher. Another thing was they were looking for uninterrupted subject time. The way the schedule works previously, you know, it was very hard with our electives or specials that we called them. And sometimes blocks would be broken up, and it might not be conducive to have 15 minutes of science here, and then we have to go to lunch, and then we get another 15 minutes here when you need that time uninterrupted to be able to really get something done or work on a lab or whatever it may be. So we really worked hard toward trying to get uninterrupted subject time so teachers can focus on that subject without getting fragmented. They were looking for a block for reteach and enrich win for students, which we are calling it a win period in our schedule, and that means what I need. So this is a time period where students, and this is from grades K through 5, where students will have an extra win periods throughout the week where it's, let's say, there's a group of students who need some remediation in math. Okay? So now these teachers can... These students can work on their math remediation. Or maybe there's a group with enrichment in language arts. Or maybe we didn't have enough time to finish up our science that we need to work on. So there's these periods built in for whatever is needed. Also, in this time period, chorus, which previously for students was fourth... Fourth and fifth grade chorus was a pull-out, so they would lose instructional time during that. Now that's incorporated into the win time. So it will be a set schedule on a rotating basis so that if the students have, you know... If the teachers know that, okay, our certain fourth and fifth graders are going out to chorus, well, now we can focus on whatever else anyone's left in the class with third grade time and what's needed for them. So it was a good buyback for that. Departmentalization. We are going to departmentalization in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So that means that teachers will be subject-specific. So, and I'll explain a little bit. I'll show you a schedule in a two-teacher team. So let's say it's a fourth grade level, and there's only two fourth grade classes in the building. That means one teacher will teach language arts and social studies, and the other teacher will teach math and science. So they are subject-specific. They don't have to constantly focus on all of the subject areas. If it's a three-teacher team on a grade level, then one teacher will do math only, one teacher will do language arts only, and the third teacher will do science and social studies. We have added technology classes as in electives. So just like your art, music, PE, world language. We now have technology classes that will be given to the students on their six-day rotation basis. They were looking for common planning and PLC time, which is a professional learning community time embedded into the schedule. That is there for teachers. You will see as we look at a schedule that teachers across a grade level all have the same common time off. So every second grade teacher across the district is offered a particular time, every third grade, fourth grade, et cetera. So this is a time where grade-level teachers can really collaborate and work on, you know, what's needed for students and lesson planning and things like that. Daily electives consistent across the grade levels, which we will show you. This new schedule will operate on a six-day rotation schedule. It's going to be a little bit different than a five-day week, but it's very simple, and I'll explain how that works today. As a parent, that's going to be the part we're going to keep track of, but we're going to be putting out a calendar with the days, and that will be set. And I know the teachers will be reminding all the time. And the only reason for that is really just for PE, for physical education, because they need to know that they have their sneakers that day and things like that. But other than that, it won't have any effect on what the electives will date. Giffen and Talented Program is going school-based. So in the past, our Giffen and Talented Program was housed at school number 10, and students were bused there. Well, now it will be housed in their school. So the students will remain in their school, and they will have GNT once a day on their six-day rotation basis. And the teachers won't be in their school for them. Their homework are traveling. They have teachers in the building, and they remain in their buildings. And then just this minor thing. Teachers were looking for AM/PM homeroom. You know, we all started the day right as soon as the students walked in, and that was, you know... That could have been language arts time. So you had a loss of time because it was, let's get over, you know, their coats off, their... It's wintertime, lots of extra clothing to get off, collect the lunch money, things like that. And we now have time embedded at the beginning of the day and the end of the day for those housekeeping things that need to get done and getting students unpacked and packed up at the end of the day. So all of these were embedded into the schedule. Now kindergarten, first and second grade, pre-K, pre-K is not a part of this because pre-K is tools, and that's a little bit... They run on a different schedule. So this is encompassing K through 5. So some of the things we say on this... Here we are. Additional changes. I have mentioned the six-day rotation schedule. So in order to incorporate all of the daily electives that happen, because there are six of them. Students are going to have art, music, PE, and health twice a week. So that's four. They're going to have world language, and world language will be in kindergarten now as well, and technology. So that's six different electives that they will have across the six-day rotation cycle. And then, so for example, if school next year starts on Thursday, September 6th, I believe it is. So September 6th, Thursday is day one, Friday is day two, Monday's day three, Tuesday four, five, six, ends on Thursday. So then day one begins again the following Friday. So it's constantly in succession, and that's it. So whatever child has always on day one throughout the year, they will have that same thing on day one all the time. So the teachers will absolutely... Like I said, that's probably the most difficult for parents because wondering what they have that day, if it's busy day or not. But the teachers will absolutely send that schedule home so you know what day every elective is. One of the other things we're adding is phonics component into the kindergarten. There will be an episode on that. We're bringing in a foundations program to do a little more focus on phonics. We found that that was a need. And also handwriting will absolutely be given in the third grade. That will be a focus in third grade. It will... Yes. What's going to happen, I mean, it's going to be a little transition with third grade. So what will happen is they will learn the handwriting in third grade, and then when they move on to fourth and fifth grade, the writing pieces that they do, writing pieces certainly will be required to continue with the handwriting so they practice.
Yeah, it's a big requirement because I mean, I asked my children to do the handwriting. But I mean, the teacher, I mean, don't push them that way. And there's always, you know, disagreement between me and my children and, you know, me and the, like, mother who is pushing and then, you know...
Right.
What's also concerning, when you send those chunks to school teacher, sometimes they'll return, they don't check spelling. I mean, like, they... Sometimes they tell me, "Oh, eventually they'll learn how to spell the words." What does it mean eventually they will learn? I mean, if the child is sure that this word is, like, you know... If nobody corrects him, and he's sure that the word is how it's supposed to, like, he pronounced, he writes it down, and he will remember it that way.
Right. And that would be something to discuss with, you know, whoever the child's teacher is next year, concerned with that. But with the handwriting, we absolutely will have that. It will be embedded in the curriculum in third grade, and then in fourth and fifth grade, they will be required to continue that in some of their writings.
No, it's just, I mean, what's concerning the homework, or classwork, how many of you parents see the classwork during the year the teacher sends it, like, on a weekly period? I don't see the classwork.
I do see it.
But I mean, like...
There'll be a time though. We want to continue with the presentation so we can go with that. So now we're looking at here, and I know this gets a little bit confusing. Okay, there's a lot of blocks up there, but just so you can look at that quickly. This would be student schedules. This is an example of a three-teacher team. So that would mean that there's, let's say, three fourth grade teachers at that grade level in that particular school. All right? So what happens is then the students get broken down into homeroom with each teacher. So what you would have is you would have group one, group two, and group three. So that's, let's say, you're 60 fourth graders across a grade level, and they're broken up with each teacher. What you see is any of the blocks in red are in language arts time. The blocks in blue are math time. Orange is social studies, and the green is science. Okay? We have gray areas in there that are writing time. We have yellow, which is win, which that could change accordingly. Remember, this is just a sample schedule of what the components would be. And then obviously, we have lunch recess. That has not changed, so the students have their lunch and recess time. And then we have a lighter color there, which is their, like, a teal color. That's their electives. So that's the time where they, every day at the same time, they'll either art, music, PE, world language, or technology. And that's the time that the teachers have common walk time. Yes?
Hi. How does this schedule work with students that are in pull-out? Will the pull-out classes follow?
Match. Yes.
Okay.
Right. We're in the process of that right now. We have this skeleton framework of... Then this schedule is also going to Genesis. So for those of you who have students in the middle or high school, and you know that you can pull up and see schedules and see things in there, this is going to be in Genesis. We have the skeleton framework in there currently right now. As soon as we do our rollover in two weeks, then we will have our new students enrolled in the homerooms, and then we are creating the schedules. We... I have a scheduling team, my supervisors who are working with the principals and the supervisor of elementary special education, and they will sit together and make sure that it matches. So if a child is in a pull-out in that school, the grade level will match. So that's why I say, like, here it is. It could be... This is the components of it, but it could be tailored a little bit differently for every school or grade level depending on the needs with specialification students or ESL students. Because we want to make that match.
I have a question on this schedule.
Yes.
I should have stuck it on the page. So each class, I guess, if it's 10 kids in a class, they're going to go to each, you know, world language, they're going to go to PE, they're going to go to everything at the same time? And that one, like, how does that... I guess I don't understand how it's going to work.
Okay, for the 11, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, just this is now, so if it's...
I don't have a challenge.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a language arts.
So if it's, um... So for example, if I'm a language arts teacher.
Yes.
Okay? And I... Let me... Let me show you this. I'm going to go to this one next. These are the teacher schedules.
Okay.
So now, blue, that's the math teacher, and this is for a three-person team. Language arts is red, and then science and social studies here. So let's say that I'm a language arts teacher. I have a group of students that are my group of students.
Okay.
Okay? So what's going to happen is group one will be assigned PE on a certain day. They go to that. It's only that one...
Okay.
No, it's not all 60 of them going together.
Okay.
It's broken down by class, and they all go through the electives.
Okay.
Just as a...
So when it's the win, is it going to be different? If I need help in math, is it going to be different kids from different classes?
Correct, yes.
So that's where the teachers will collaborate on all of their pool of students and say, "Okay, we have, you know, 15 students who need this, we have 10 who need this. Let's see how we can break them down so they're meeting their needs that way." Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the three-team schedule. So if your child is at a grade level, third, fourth, or fifth grade level next year, that has three teachers, three classes across that grade level, that's how it is going to look. When we go to the two-teacher team schedule, all right? As I said before, it's broken down once again. Same configuration, language arts, math, science, and social studies. The teachers, language arts and social studies are paired up, and math and science are paired up. Okay? So the students are just going back and forth between the two teachers with that. But it basically works the same. They still have their win periods, they still have their electives across the board during that same time period. So K1 and 2 remain there with their same teacher all day long. Okay, that does not change. Third, fourth, and fifth, we have... They have the different teachers for departmentalization. And that will, you know, it now that gives the teacher the focus so that they can focus on just one or two subject areas so, you know, we can concentrate on more of the needs of the students, whether there's enrichment, whether there's remediation, or what's needed. And the students will have the opportunity built into the schedule to be able to have a needs map as well. I bet this was just a teacher angle of it. You should see the two teachers. Are there any other questions? Yes?
I have one question. With the technology, what are the subjects that are taught with the technology?
The subjects are... Okay. Well, right, they're currently... They're working on the curriculum. This is something new that we brought in. So this summer, they are working on writing the curriculum, and they will be... There are standards that are for each grade level currently now by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So they will be using those as a guideline in order to create what the curriculum will be to add at each grade level.
So when you're talking about the groups, how many children are assigned to, like, each group?
That all depends on the number of students enrolled in that grade level.
But do they have a limitation, you know, like, to certain, or how many?
I mean, it's the same as our class sizes now. Nothing's changed. So if you're assigned a class, I mean, I think many of our classes can run, I think, anywhere from 15 to 25 students probably. I mean, it depends on how many are enrolled in that school at that grade level.
And what's the time for win?
The time for win? Those are... Everything is working on 20-minute periods.
40 minutes a period.
Yes. For those. And the electives are 40 minutes as well. Yes?
Have you guys created metrics or anything to measure how successful the program is?
That... Well, we have not yet, no. I mean, we're just... We're rolling this out, and like I said, we're going to...
Are there plans too? Just to make sure... I mean, because if we're looking for certain things to show that it's successful, will you, like, gauge that to see if it's working, and if not, maybe change something else?
Absolutely. I mean, we did the same thing with our middle school schedule as well. We rolled that out two years ago now. And in the first year, we made changes to it.
Okay.
Obviously, we know this is, you know, first year, so...
Yeah.
There will be change, so we plan on learning from our mistakes with it and going back and making any changes that are necessary to...
Okay.
So I think 40 minutes a period, so it will be break between the periods, you know, like, I mean, or they switch in the classrooms or they stay there one class at a time?
The teachers will remain in the classrooms, and the students will move to the classrooms.
From today.
And what's happening now is the teacher... The principals, they have their teachers paired up. So if it's two teachers or three teachers, they are putting them in close proximity. So, you know, if I'm a student on a three-teacher team, I could have one teacher across the hall and one teacher next door. So the teachers are all always working together with the students and moving the transition time. So it's good as well too because now they have a little bit of a movement. You know, sometimes a little bit of exercise. They get up and they change, and the teachers are with them on that with that transition time. Yes?
Is the hours for the school to stay?
Hours do not change. Correct.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
These changes were really something where the vast majority of these ideas came from our teachers and the people who work with your children every single day. So we'd like to think that this is going to be a very positive change for our district. As Mrs. Cleary stated, of course, we'll evaluate it as we go along through the process. And at the end, if changes are necessary, we'll make them to the best interest of our kids. Thanks for those who came out tonight for this presentation. If you've just been out for this presentation, that's about as exciting as it's going to get. You're more than welcome to stay. Make yourself comfortable. We have one last thing. My superintendentiary report, Mr. Tapuleski. We have a gentleman in the audience tonight who I pretty much had to threaten to come here tonight to be recognized because he does a lot of things for children in our district that goes unrecognized. And he doesn't do these things to be recognized. So in order for me to get him here tonight just to give him this beautiful certificate, really took an awful lot because he does it from his heart. He has donated much time, effort, and money out of his own pocket, most recently for one of our students who was diagnosed with leukemia. And I see Isabel is here tonight. I can't believe that she's here as well.
Oh, sweetie.
I can't say enough about what Mark Munizza does. He's a parent in our district. His children went through our schools. He's been a lifelong living resident. And besides all the work he did for Isabel, there's a lot of other things that he does, and I don't want to embarrass him. But I do want to ask Mr. Schehada to say a few words because he has also worked with Mr. Munizza pretty closely. Mr. Schehada?
First, I'm replying to a call that's being late. There was a really, really bad accident on the parkway. Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
As a kid and even as an adult, I've always inspired to be like some politician, some athlete, or some celebrity in Hollywood. Now, I aspire to be someone like Mark. For as long as I can remember, Mark has been an active member in our community. I realize this in person after I was fortunate enough to be elected to the Board of Education. Throughout my short time on the board, I have witnessed Mark donate money out of his own pocket to our district. I have been fortunate enough to work with Mark on a fundraiser for Isabel Dominguez where Mark put money out of his own pocket to help pay for the venue. I have witnessed Mark orchestrate a car show fundraiser, excuse me, where the proceeds went to the same child. Every time I ask Mark, "What makes you do this?", he always says, "I was raised old-school, bro." This is a testament to the amazing human beings who raised him, and this is the mentality he passes down to his own children along with his amazing life, who are all active in our community and public service in their own right. Mark Munizza is the definition of spreading love the linl way. What I've found in my old, old 25 years of life is that the change we really make comes about when we come together as one, regardless of race or religion, sexual preference, or political ideologies, and just lend a hand. It has a ripple effect that will outlast us all. I will end with this. Love with all your heart. Let your love speak volumes. Let your love be courageous. Make change in this world because change will not roll in on the wheels of certainty. It is carried on the backs of unyielding lovers. Mark, on behalf of the board, on behalf of our community, we thank you for everything you do for the bottom of our hearts. We love you.
Shout out class of 81, Mark.
We really embarrassed him tonight. His daughter works for me, so I had to threaten him. It's not about me. It's about this little girl right here.
That's right.
It's all about her. How is Isabel doing?
She's doing good. She just had her chemo yesterday. So we need to take good care of her, but because of this, because of him, we need to be here tonight to thank you and to let all the people know that as a family, we feel so blessed, not only because of the support of the community, but because people like him. God put angels in our life, and he is one of them. We are so grateful that our lives get together. And my father just passed away 20 years ago, and I've been telling people that I feel with him... Sorry for what I'm going to say. I feel like he's my father. He's just, like, always letting me know that he's right there for me. And I feel so blessed. And I know I just made you short time, but I really love you, and my family is so thankful with you. And Isabel, we always talk about you in my home and your family and your kids. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I would just like to say something, feel like, uh, my daughter Stacy called me one night, and, um, she called me Brian, I said, "Stacy, where are you?", she goes, "I'm at the gym", I said, "I'm on my way there", of course she works, so she goes, "No, no, Dad, there's a girl in our school that was diagnosed with leukemia, her mother called and said her car broke down, and they had to walk from the train station after getting chemotherapy, and she says, you know, they're in a, in a bad way", I said, "Stacy, tell me where the car is, I'll go pick it up, I'll pay for the repair." Needless to say, we bought the car back, the car needed a motor, we called every junkyard in New Jersey, one place had it, the guy said it's four hundred dollars for the motor, I said, "I'll be down there tomorrow, pick it up." I go down and I see the owner of the junkyard, TNT Auto Wreckers, in Sarago, I told him exactly what it was for, he took my check and ripped it up. My business partner donated the labor to put the motor in the car for her, so there are good people in this world, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and I appreciate that gift. Doctor, give it to him.
Isabel, you hang in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, all right, I think that's the end of the meeting. Thank you, uh, I just have to go back to say, do this, I, I, uh, ask for motion for the approval of minutes of May twenty-second to May, May seventeen, May twenty-second, May twenty-ninth, May twenty-third, and I have that motion?
Make the motion.
Ms. Birch did, second.
Second.
Ms. Cozak, vote for please.
Yes, unless there wasn't. Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
William.
Yes.
Ms. Cozak, yeah. Mr. Martusek?
Uh, yes, on, uh, seventeen to twenty-second, and abstain on twenty-three, twenty-nine.
Mrs. Schehada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Um, just stand away from me.
Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes. Okay, um, attorney's report.
There's one item on the agenda, is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Linden Board of Ed and Linden Public Schools. Need a motion?
Second.
Vote for?
Mrs. Baviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. William?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak, yes. Mr. Martusek?
Yes.
Mr. Schehada?
Thank you.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes. I have to do this to you.
That's good, I'm ready.
Okay. Curriculum instructions?
I got it just in time, huh? The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following thirty-six motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through ten deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of special programs for classified students, the approval of payments for related services, the adjustment of tuition as part of the NJBOE audit, the approval of home instruction services, the approval of transportation, and the approval of one-to-one paraprofessionals. Item eleven approves payment schedules for athletic events, twelve through fifteen approve team sports schedules, tennis championship dates, award programs, and the annual elementary track and field event. Sixteen and seventeen authorize its athletic training staff to carry out treatments for injuries, and the football team to begin its heat acclimatization period. Item eighteen amends board action on past CNI reports, nineteen adopts revised curriculum, twenty and twenty-one grant permission for use of facilities and school activities, twenty-two approves district field trips and amendments to field trips, twenty-three approves training for district staff, twenty-four approves professional development activities, twenty-five approves testing dates, twenty-six approves courses through ediscier for twelfth grade students, twenty-seven approves Saturday school dates, twenty-eight approves a tuition agreement with the Union County Vocational Schools, twenty-nine grants permission for a teacher to conduct her principal internship, thirty approves a school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill, Bill of Rights Act, thirty-one grants approval to enter into an agreement with Union County Ed Services Commission, thirty-two and thirty-three approves submissions of the IDEA application and security drill statement of assuring, thirty-four grants permission of Family Center CDC to conduct a tutoring program at School Two, thirty-five accepts the student safety data system report for, uh, report period one, and item thirty-six approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting. Mr. President, I move curriculum and instruction, item one through thirty-six, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Vote for him.
Mrs. Baviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martusek?
Yes.
Mr. Schehada?
Yes.
Ms. Bellani?
Yes.
Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Tapleski?
Yes. Support operations, oh wait, I did, management operations, Mrs. Bellani, I don't know how I skipped that.
The Management Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number one, the father of retirements are accepted with regret. Dr. Robert Tozey, you want to take that too?
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. Ms. Sepia Coler is with our team, Linden Public Schools, as an elementary teacher, she's worked in the district since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, as a first and fifth grade teacher at Schools One, Five, and Six. Mrs. Helen Helen has worked for the Board of Ed for nineteen years, uh, as a part-time school aide, uh, at School Aid her entire career, and Mrs. Lenora Mescanich has worked at Linden Board of Ed for twenty-two years, as a part-time aide at School Aid. On behalf of the administration faculty and staff, and the board, we want to wish Miss Brean Peely a happy and healthy and very long retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozey. Item number two accepts the following resignations as listed. Item number three amends, amends board action on past management operation reports. Item number four amends the location of following staff, Detective Martin, one, eighteen. Items number five, nine, I'm sorry, item number five is for, um, various appointments, including, I'm sorry, a vice president position for Mr. Fekidi. What, I, I'm sorry.
That's surprising. Just gave you my whole one.
You're the vice principal, um, I keep calling, Mrs. Tapleski didn't become principal too. Items number, there is about items number five, nine, eleven, twelve, fifteen, eleven through seventeen, nineteen through twenty-seven, twenty-nine through forty-one, fifty-one, fifty-three through fifty-seven, and fifty-nine through sixty-two are for various appointments and reappointments for a variety of positions. Item number six is to approve the transfers as listed below. Item number seven is to approve assignment upon returns from leave. Item number eight approves the following needs of absences as listed. Item number nine is once, uh, Christopher Collins was active in principal at School Eight, from August first through December thirty-first. Item number ten approves the change of degree for twenty-eight to twenty-nineteen. Item number eighteen approves fully teacher for the extreme program as listed. Item number twenty-eight approves additional summer work for the following council, June ninth to August twenty-third. Item number forty-two, three, four, and five, a variety of correction or duration of sick days for employees number sixteen, seventeen, eight, eighteen, and nineteen, dash seventeen, eighteen, and the, is on file with the superintendent. Item number forty-six restores the increment of employee number eighteen, dash seventeen, eighteen. Items number forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine is for, uh, increment adjustments for employees thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, dash seventeen, eighteen. Item number fifteen, uh, is the approval of the quantitative goal of the superintendent, which is, um, which are in the hands of the board members, and that the business administrator board secretary will forward a copy of that to the Union County Superintendents of Schools. And number fifty-two is to compensate the total staff for holding royal licenses as listed. Number fifty-eight is to approve stuff listed below to for nears in the years during August twenty-eighteen, uh, as listed. Mr. President, I move items one through sixty-two to management operations, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Vote for him.
Mrs. Baviano?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. William?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martusek?
Yes.
Mr. Schehada?
Yes, to all, but abstain to number twenty-nine.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes, to all, except the state, uh, state, um, Bellani Dust Company, never heard of it. Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes. Senator Paul Sussa, shout out, we have nothing this month, thank you. Negotiations committee, Mrs. Bellani?
Uh, we've had several meetings on both sides, we seem to be continuing to move forward, we have two other days set up coming up in the month of July, and hopefully we'll have a better, uh, we, we have to, um, a settlement, maybe this month.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. EST for parents, you didn't have a high school, right?
Yes, I did.
You did have a, all right. Vote for him.
Uh, we held our last parent EST meeting for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year on June twelve, at McManus Little School, it started at seven P.M. Parents representing Schools One, Two, Five, Six, Eight, Nine, Ten, McManus-Solana High School attended. Mrs. Cleary did a presentation of the new elementary school schedule, she did a thorough job explaining how we came to decide the departmentalization of the elementary school new schedule, and she also did a thorough job explaining the changes that were being made. Uh, she showed examples of the new schedules and took questions from the parents that attended the meeting. We know how important it is to keep the lines of communication open with parents, and we want to make you aware of all the changes that are occurring within the district, so that's why we held that presentation, uh, we sent out an email, uh, with a letter explaining it, and we also did another presentation here tonight. This is our main voyage of the departmentalization of the elementary schools, and like all new things, there may be some glitches, room for improvement, or changes that need to be made, and we'll be visiting this and getting feedback, so that we can make sure we have a solid program for our children. And if you have any questions or concerns regarding this new schedule, you can call, uh, contact Mrs. Cleary, Dr. Robert Tozey, or any of the board members via email or phone. Uh, after Mrs. Cleary finished her portion, uh, we went into our regular EST meeting, and, uh, we had, uh, some parents that expressed some concerns about recess, how much time they were receiving in the, on the elementary level, uh, were there any breaks for snacks and water, and how can we possibly make, uh, time for that? There were some concerns with the G and T testing, parents said the children were rushed while taking the test, and that the letter explaining the testing went home after the testing occurred. I wasn't in all of the buildings, just in some. Uh, parents like to know if we could give a stipend for childcare for our PTA board, our PTA, our board meetings, and our parent EST meetings, so that children have a safe place to be while attending our meetings. Some of the safety concerns were brought to our attention about voting day at our schools, while voting is taking place, there's no way to monitor who's coming in and out of our building, and if they should be there, or if not, you know, whoever is voting, um, we do check IDs for parents on a daily basis, um, entering our buildings, so for strangers that are entering, we, uh, did not do that, but we are now aware of that, and we are going to be definitely looking into that. Um, there was some concerns about fun days at some of the schools, and the safety about the children playing out and utilizing the parks while the children are outside, uh, with, um, other people interacting on the playground, so we're gonna be, uh, looking into that also. Uh, the parents like to know if Pom-Townian can serve water as a choice with milk during lunchtime, uh, and not have to pay for, um, extra for the water, and there are some parents that are having, uh, some hard time with crediting their children's accounts when given cash when they're going to Pom-Townian. It was also brought to our attention that IDs were being checked via picture on parents' cellphones rather than parents physically showing their IDs in hand, and, uh, there were some, several concerns about the special needs classrooms at School Two. Parents were, had some concerns, and, um, they wanted to know about filing reports at the before care and after care for bullying of students, or students maybe putting their hands on each other, and the process of how this is handled during the before care and after care, and how they should be receiving feedback once a report is filed. There's a fence that was damaged at School Six, and it was a safety concern for, uh, for all the students due to the severity of the damage, and I always report back to Dr. Robert Tozey after all of our meetings, uh, we discuss what's going on, uh, in most cases, some of the situations are handled that day, or if they were not handled immediately after, and some other issues take some time. It was a pleasure to sit and chat with the parents that attended our parent EST meetings, it was nice to see we could answer questions or clear concerns sometimes right in the meeting, and even more so to see the parents interacting and giving suggestions to how they solve their situations. We hope that you all will come back in September and bring a friend, and your friend bring a friend, uh, tell them we have coffee and cookies and those famous brownies, I almost think you all come just for the brownies. So stay tuned for our twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen meeting schedule. That concludes my parent EST report.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch, now, the high school EST group here, please, Mrs. Birch.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch, because you're a vital, um, this is vital for the, you know, success of the board, so thank you for doing this.
So our June fourth meeting for the student EST was in the library, and, uh, we had breakfast for our students, uh, Mr. Fekidi, our advisor, attended. There were thirteen of our students, four gentlemen, nine ladies, uh, the breakdown of four freshmen, three sophomore, four juniors, and two seniors. We did, um, have some discussion before we went into our breakfast, so, uh, they were expressing some concerns about the machines in the weight room, they said, um, that they need to be fixed, um, they said the water pumps were leaking, and the pipes in the weight room were leaking, and, uh, they were asking for sandy wipes to clean the machines after use, and they also said that the electronics on our bikes were not working. The next, uh, item that we discussed, and, uh, they didn't think I was going to, uh, bring this up in our meeting, but I told them that they brought it up, so I have to bring it up. No, it is not. Uh, they would like to know if they have an A average as a senior, if they could be exempt from taking their finals.
No, not seniors. Not seniors, no, not everybody, every night.
Oh, they want everybody?
Cause seniors are a lot of it.
It's just seniors, they wanted everybody, okay, got it, um.
I'm not necessarily opposed-
bring this up in our meeting, but I told them that they brought it up, so I have to bring it up. No, it is not. Uh, they would like to know if they have an A average as a senior, if they could be exempt from taking their finals.
No, not seniors.
Not seniors, no, no, not everybody, every grade.
Oh, they want everybody?
Cause seniors were on it.
It's just seniors, they wanted everybody. Okay, got it.
I'm not necessarily opposed. I consider it.
Okay. Uh, and they said that if, um, there was a problem, they were, they were trying to work it all out with how are students going to get to school for other reasons and with the busing. So they were, they were working really hard at this. Uh, the schedule for their finals, they said hurt this year, but I think that was due to our snow days and all of that other stuff. So they, they said it was crunch time, and, and they were, they were put to the test, but I know they all, uh, pulled through and did very well. Uh, some of the seniors, their pers, their perspective was the school has progressed and updated, and they're happy that they were a part of helping the progression of Linden High, and they're looking forward to coming back and seeing the changes that they were a part of. Uh, all of the students were honored to be a part of our student EST. They were very excited about the upcoming school picnic. And one of the things they also wanted to see was, um, an academic hallway, like the sport, sports hallway, and almost like a wall of academics. So, um, no, they want to see that in the high school, like a wall of academics.
Um... I think each, uh, you know, they're doing the, I think each department is doing it now.
Yes, each department, so now they'd like to see. I guess they're valedictorian, they're salutatorian, and all of that showcased. Uh, I am extremely lucky and honored to sit with my EST students and engage in conversations that not only discuss the concerns of the high school, but also all of the positive aspects the district has to offer. Each student truly advocated for what their passions were. I will miss all of the seniors that will be leaving this year, and I'm looking forward to seeing my sophomores, juniors, and seniors again, and of course, welcoming the freshmen in September. They're an amazing group of children that represent our district in such a positive and caring way. I also would like to take this time to thank Mr. Fekidi and Mrs. Tori for all of their time and help facilitating our meetings, for listening to all the students' concerns, and acting on some of the most important issues almost immediately for them. I know it makes a difference when our students know we're listening and know that we do care. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Burge. Item, you didn't have, we didn't do middle school this time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I thought, uh, special ed?
No, I just, I'd just like to just say one thing, I, as far as the middle school's concerned. Uh, we had the opportunity to be at the sole graduation day, uh, Mr. J, Ms. Kodak and I, and, uh, and Dr. Robert Tozzi, and, uh, I'd just like to compliment, uh, actually, Mr. Malinour and staff, and, uh, the PTA president, Ms. Chris, she was there. I want to tell you, very efficient run operation. Yeah, two hundred kids, believe me, if you, I put together these things for many, many years with middle school, and, uh, we started at ten o'clock, on the dock, two hundred kids, we were done at eleven oh three, not a name was mispronounced, no one tripped. Believe me, it does happen, and I do like to compliment everybody, because I tell you, it was a very well-run, uh, whole operation, and it was a great time, and I wish the best to everybody, and again, thank you, because it was a job well done. And you can pass it on.
You can have, we have a special ed, we have a...
No, no, not the last one.
Was there a...
Yeah.
Okay, Ed Services Commission.
Yes, so, uh, we had, they had, um, appointed the directors, uh, for, I guess, for the following, the following meeting, and which were fifteen, and I was one of them. Uh, they did recognition of the retirees and, uh, and, uh, teacher recognitions. There were two. They also had a UCA, UCAS, um, which is also considered for student recognition, stats, and student success, stones of exiting or hardship. Um, they made it, uh, they want to address the vaping. Uh, it's really an issue right now, and they're sneaking it into the classrooms. So, so far, Elizabeth is successful with maintaining the vaping and cigarette smoking. So, um, what they're trying to do now is find a training so that teachers and staff get a ten, so that they can eliminate, um, the vaping. Uh, they also, for ESY, they're seeking, uh, par professionals, and anyone who is interested are more than welcome to apply. Uh, they had graduation, which was on, uh, June ninth, and they also had two carnivals, um, which was awesome, and they had a lot of students in town to come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilliam. Okay, state and county delegate report. County delegate first. Uh, that's me, cause I'm county president. We had, uh, a county association leadership meeting in Trenton, uh, on June second. The main presentation at the side, at, at that particular meeting was from, uh, a health educator from South Jersey Prenatal Care about, of all things, vaping. Uh, vaping is a big issue, especially now that the new, uh, vape, uh, devices are made to look like, uh, USB...
Yeah, flash drops.
Flash drops, and not cigarettes, and, and that's purposeful. The whole idea is because, uh, cigarette smoking has been so downgraded and so bad, uh, they weren't getting the sell of the vaping stuff because it looked like a cigarette. So they decided to make it look different, and it's picked up. And there's a lot of other stuff, I have some, uh, contact information for Dr. Robert Tozzi to get posters and stuff for the school district. The other thing is tentative dates for the county meetings for next year have been set, uh, although the topics have not been established. Uh, I will give, uh, at the, I will give the dates at the next meeting because, uh, at the July meeting, we should have the top topics settled also. So I will give those to you, if you have ideas, because we haven't had that meeting yet. Anyone has an idea of what they'd like to see covered at the county meeting, uh, let me know, and I certainly will bring that, uh, to the fold when we make, when we have our meeting. It's, it's about, uh, three or four of us. As far as the state is concerned, uh, the governor did sign a bill that permits board members to run as a team, which means that you only need to cast, uh, I believe, one vote for all three people, or two, whatever the team makes up. I don't know how that works. I don't know if the county even knows how it works yet. But that bill was signed. And you may or may not be aware, and I believe it was Thursday, uh, the legislature passed a budget which has not yet been vetoed or signed by the governor. And I will just say that if the budget holds the way it is, uh, we will be in good shape. Uh, that concludes my report. Okay. Safety committee?
Security?
What, yeah, pretty safety, right?
The only thing I want to touch upon right now is that, um, we have had a discussion about next year for, um, primary day, because we're already closed for election day. So Dr. Robert Tozzi's worked on something for next year. It was an issue that we weren't prepared for. We just, we just weren't, I'll admit to that. Uh, but it will be rectified for next year. We are going over and looking at all the, uh, new initiatives that we put in place, seeing how they're working, what we can improve on, what needs to be changed. And as far as the pictures, the ID on the phone, I think we've all come to the agreement that that was going to be acceptable. So, um, if anybody has any other questions, you can most certainly reach out to me, and we can discuss it at a pleasant meeting.
Mrs. Bellani, do you want to mention somebody that worked during the summer? The retention vestibules?
Do we want, oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, because that's not...
Okay, so one of the things that we are going to be doing, uh, so every building is going to have the retention vestibules, is that the official room?
That's the official room.
Okay, so we're not calling it the man trap? The non-gender, the non-binary gender, yes. Like in the high school, if you've been to the high school where you walk into one door, you still have another door that you have to get through. That area there has been colloquially called the man trap or the retention vestibule. Uh, it's just another layer of protection from somebody walking into the building, they still have to be buzzed in again. Every building, I believe, is going to be completed for the summer.
God willing.
God willing, um, that they're going to have that, that extra layer of protection. So, some of the buildings are going to be easier than others. Some are going to be a little bit more work, really workable, are they going? But we're on our way. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. All right, now, accept a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel.
So, second.
Go for them.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam?
Yes.
Cozak has the Houston, Martin, Tucci.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Ms. Bellani?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolew?
Yes. We're leaving, you can stay, because we're not, we don't want to throw you out in the halls, and, uh, action may be taken along the return.
Make that motion, second.
All in favor? All opposed, abstained, you're back in, okay, we're back in session. Ms. Gilliam?
Yes, oh, so I wanted to talk about that.
No, 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 the motion.
Sorry. Yeah, oh, sorry, sorry, I'm so sorry. Uh, motion to appoint employee number one, dash eighteen, dash nineteen for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year, uh, at school...
At a location to be determined.
Oh, sorry, at a location to be determined. Second.
Go for them.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martin Tucci?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada? Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolew?
Okay, comments from board members? Go ahead.
So, I would like to talk about graduation. It was my first year at Linden High School graduation, and, uh, I actually wore my Linden High School dress when I graduated from high school. And it was always my dream to be a board member and hopefully to sit on that stage and to look at the graduating class and to shake hands. And it was just really awesome to see my other fellow board members get hugs from their, their students, well, not their students, but their, uh, children, um, their children's friends, or people that they admired. So I think it was a phenomenal experience, and I was just honored to be there.
Thank you, anyone else have any comments?
I do.
Go ahead, Mrs. Welch.
So just really quickly, I, I, I hope everyone was listening, and I hope everyone heard Dr. Robert Tozzi when he said that eighty-three percent of our students are attending a two- or four-year university. I think that's really awesome. Um, it says a lot about our school district, about our teachers, and, um, just get the word out there, people. Let everyone know, eighty-three percent, that is really huge. And the kids that are entering the military, kudos, congratulations to them as well. The kids that are going to work, God bless you, good luck in your future. And, um, I think, you know, we have an awesome school district here, thanks.
Me, too.
Anyone else?
I also neglected to mention that we had a commissioner of education, and he noted it, and he said that he was invited to over sixty different commencement ceremonies throughout the state, but it takes seven, one of which was Linden, so, my, it was nice to have.
And I just want to mention that when we talk about our ROTC permanent, we have, for those of you that may not be aware, we have three young ladies who are going to Rutgers University in the Naval ROTC on a full ride. And when they graduate, they will be commissioned officers in the United States Navy. That's impressive, the fact that we got three, not one. That says a lot about our program, and it says a lot about our kids.
And our Rutgers.
And they're going to, are you, are you, rah rah? Okay, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.